Six thirty-one and of always, not always, it's just recently. I will announce that this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. And welcome, of course, all of those folks out there in TV land joining us this evening. Who have nothing else to do, I suppose, but glad to have you with us. Don't turn that dial. So, let's, uh, take a few minutes to review the minutes of March the fourteenth, please. The corrections, deletions, or additions to the March fourteenth minutes?
Yeah, on, uh, my, uh, one, two, third paragraph, Tom Branko noted the contract. I contacted the Attorney Generals. And it says here, the use of our own legal counsel by the Planning Board may be allowed. I think I did say it's only allowed if it's not indicated in the, anywhere else. It's not allowed, um, as long as it's not disallowed in the town charter. And our town charter does say this.
So you want to qualify that statement?
I want to qualify the town, the Planning Board can't get outside counsel only with permission of the Select Board.
Right.
So it should say may be allowed with the permission?
Permission of the Select Board, yeah.
Could you, uh? Could you change the very first sentence in bold? Just strike the words, "Earth intake." Norman Brown's project.
Okay.
I don't want to characterize it.
Anything else in the minutes? I wasn't here that evening, so. I had no comment.
I, I don't understand number four on the second page, way at the end. The prior large-scale earth removal operation that Mr. Brown was conducting, under the general bylaws, Chapter nineteen earth removal, does not apply now. What does not apply? Are you missing a word?
It's not under the general bylaws anymore, the earth remo- well, the earth removals are under the general bylaws. But the operation he is conducting, was conducting, was expired.
So the permit doesn't apply now? Is that what you're trying to say, Tom?
Yes.
You have no time for this?
I don't remember.
I'm trying to find out what it is that does not apply. You can't say an operation.
It's the permit.
That's what I thought.
You said that, Tom?
Well, yeah, we gotta get it out of Mr. Branko.
No, I mean, is that, is that an accurate statement?
I'm just reading again.
Okay.
Prior large-scale earth removal operation. Yes, I'll be correct.
How would you correct it, Tom?
Um, where was that? But, prior, the large-scale earth removal permit.
Prior large-scale earth removal permit.
Okay, instead of operation, that would be fair.
You can't conduct the permit. How about the prior large-scale earth removal operation permit that Mr. Brown was conducting? After the operation, or Mr. Brown was using?
Okay.
Allergies, allergies.
I make, maybe we should accept as.
Well, let's get, let me get that squared away first, Tom. So the prior large-scale earth removal operation permit, is that what we want to add?
Right, that was Mr. Brown was conducting. Basically, the old permit that he had is not, he's not under that anymore because the permit has expired.
It's, it's the permit that does not apply.
Right.
Now we have to figure out how to say it.
Yeah.
How about the prior large-scale earth removal permit that Mr. Brown was using? Under the general bylaws, does not apply now.
I said, there's something in this building every time I come in here. Go ahead, sorry about that.
I hope it's not me.
No, it's the, like, potpourri or something they have in here.
Really? That's too bad. Something we can take out?
I don't know.
How about that plant?
Well, I hear it is, Tom. Prior to the, prior, prior to the large-scale earth remo- earth remove, removal permit that Mr. Brown was conducting, under, what should be struck is, under Chapter six, uh, nineteen of the earth removal.
How about the Mr. Brown had under the general bylaws?
Did, is that, see, this is where, this, this, these, under the general bylaw, number nineteen, earth removal, his permit was never under that earth removal bylaws, that old bylaw, because it was prior to the new bylaw was put in.
So we don't, we don't want to say that at all?
Yeah, we're saying.
How about Mr. Per- Mr. Brown's permit is expired? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, basically, yeah. It doesn't apply now. The large, the large, the prior large-scale earth, uh, removal permit Mr. Brown was conducting does not, does not, was not using, does not apply now.
Okay, so, the prior large-scale earth removal permit Mr. Brown was using does not apply under the general bylaws, Chapter nineteen, earth removal.
I'll just say apply now. You can do it either way, I'm, I'm, uh. No, meaning minutes are just to give a general idea of what's actually, it's not supposed to be a verbatim.
No, but the sentence has to make sense, so we can read it in the year and understand what it says.
So I have the prior large-scale earth removal permit that Mr. Brown was using does not apply under the general bylaws, Chapter nineteen, earth removal now?
I can look.
Does not apply now, under the general bylaws.
Okay.
Anything else, anybody?
I, I've lo- I've lost a little, little thread here. The Planning Board decided to hold the writing, the writing of the letter until the Select Board meeting of March twenty-first. Did we ever write the letter?
I, I wrote a draft letter, but we, we, we passed over not to send it.
All right, we ought to bring that up and figure out what to do. But that's not been an approval issue. Um, I make a motion that we approve these minutes.
With corrections?
With corrections.
Could you say anything?
Second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? I'll abstain because I wasn't here that evening. Motion carries with the, uh, the corrections.
I have the March second, um, minutes that we approved at the last meeting for Vinc signature with the correction.
Okay, so we got that done. There you go. Okay, let's start off with the first new business item. A general discussion of the gravel pits. And as a quick review, uh, we have been working, I would say, very diligently over the last six months to try to correct the situations that exist, namely, the lack of permits that are, uh, that have not been given out to the gravel pits in town, who have the gravel pit operators, come forth as they were required to do, to renew their permits or to apply for new permits. With the exception of two people. One would be Jeff Hackler, who's had, was the first to come in and have his, uh, paperwork certified. And the second one was the gentleman who purchased the Marinelli pit and did get the proper licenses for that. So, in subsequent meetings, we've had the opportunity to issue cease and desist orders against two particular pits, both of which have complied subsequently to the gravel bylaw. And, uh, one has been completed and the other has still working on his application because of the endangered species habitat that exists on his property. So we're waiting on his finishing, him finishing his application. At the last me- meeting, we also requested the Building Inspector to issue a cease and desist order on the Pitchville Sand and Gravel pit.
Here's a copy of that.
Well, that was executed by Larry Brandt, the, uh, the Hubbardson Town Building Inspector.
Did the owner get a copy yet?
Not yet.
Don't know if anybody has.
It's going out by certified mail.
So that's the motion that we made last week. Very good.
Can we get copies of that?
Sure.
So, does anybody else got any information we'd like to discuss relative to general? In general about gravel pits?
Well, in general, we started, we started reviewing all the different pits. And I wrote a report a few months ago that we looked at the last meeting. And, um, so our plan for this year is to visit all the pits and try to get as many of them into conformance as possible. We've grabbed, we've contacted, uh, Cateysto, actually, is it Cateysto? I believe it is. Contacted the town, so that was actually the first one we did recently. Um, I know the Planning Board, prior to Mike coming on last year, had been, already issued cease and desist on a couple pits going back, uh, probably about a year, at least, I think. So we've done Cateysto's pit, we did, uh, the Pitchville Sand and Gravel pit, and I did the town pit the other day, inspected, uh, that town pit. And, uh, I put a call into Marinelli's office, or the people at, whatever the, the, the assessors have addressed, so I just kind of looked up a number and left a message, but I haven't heard back from them yet. And I think we're waiting for the Fletchers to come in, um, again, with, with their big proposal. Uh, but there's several others out there that, uh, I just haven't had time to do the research yet, on them yet, so. As soon as I get those, we'll be continuing on our quest to meet and look at these different pits. And I can go over these, I think we have that on the agenda anyways.
Do you want to talk about your report? Is that?
Uh, we can talk about the annual, if we want to morph into that list.
Yeah, why don't we just slide in, unless somebody else got any, any general comments you'd like to make?
Tom, in this letter on a cease and desist, it says, "The revised addendum proposed stated a reclamation activity, et cetera, et cetera." Do we have that addendum? A revised addendum? I have a permit around that timeframe that has an addendum. But I don't know if I have a revised addendum. Do you know what it says, or is, or does?
I don't know, I do not know if I have that, uh, I don't have a copy of it. I know Anita has a copy of it, but it's not in their file.
Well, is this coming from, is this paragraph coming from us, or is it coming from, um, Mr. Brandt's reviewing the history? I don't remember us saying that when we instructed Mr. Brandt, or moved to have Mr. Brandt do this. Where is this coming from? Do you remember our motion?
Yeah, I'll read it right now, just to see what this says, yeah.
In other words, if it's not our reason, it shouldn't be in this letter. I think.
Okay, well, I read this as Larry's, uh, explanation for the cease and desist order. And he's not quoting our motion, which he doesn't have to do. He just has to write the letter based on the motion we gave to him with his, um, rationale for it, which I, I don't have a problem with.
Well, I, I've never seen the document that he refers to knowingly seen it. I may have seen it, but I don't know that I saw it. I have the permit and an addendum. And, and don't get me wrong.
He apparently has.
Well, this doesn't really relate, this isn't, read like the motion that we.
But wait a minute, what, we don't have to, this doesn't have to be, this letter, the cease and desist order, does not have to contain the motion. The motion went from us to Mr. Brandt, and then he issues the order, and he's done so. And his explanation to Mr. Brown is simply his explanation to Mr. Brown.
Do you have our letter to Brandt? And, and don't get me wrong, I'm all for Mr. Brandt contributing. I just think you ought to tell us he's going to contribute before it zooms out.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with that, Tom. I think it's, that's his discretion. He's the officer in charge that has to make the, the notice public and, uh.
So what if, what if that reason was wrong? And the gentleman that has the cease and desist order issued upon him says, "Well, that's not a good reason." And comes back to us and says, "What are you guys doing? It's not a good reason."
I'm sorry, I don't think I have our letter to him.
Well, I, I don't know what that would matter, if that would matter. But, you know, we don't have any more responsibility to, to tell Mr. Brown what to write than he has to tell us what to write. Not to Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, Mr. Brandt.
Brandt.
So, you know, his explanation is just his explanation of the order. And, uh, he does mention that it was from the Planning Board, that he requested that, and he is issuing it.
I believe the first paragraph is directly from the Planning Board. The, the two thousand and two statement, I think, is what you made when you made the motion, Tom. Is that right?
Well.
All right, well, I'm not going to agonize over it, but I just wondered where it came from. And I, I'd like to get a copy of that addendum with a timeline, because I don't think I have it. But let me look.
Well, we can ask, we can ask Larry for it, that's.
I have a real problem with the last sentence, the last half of the comma. Until a newer modified reclamation proposal under the provisions of the DEP interim policy is approved.
Yeah, what, what's that all about?
That wasn't part of our.
We're not, we're not relying on a DEP policy. We're relying on our town bylaws.
And that's true.
I don't, I don't like the last, I don't like a lot of this letter.
Well, I think the only thing we can do is write a retort to him explaining what our concerns are. Because if this has already gone out, the, the effect is still a cease and desist.
And no one can release that except the Planning Board?
Correct.
Well, but, but what it says is, "The cease and desist order will remain until a newer modified reclamation proposal under the provisions of a DEP policy is approved." That could be tomorrow. And a cease and desist lifts, and our reasons for having a cease and desist are that it's not reclaimed. No actions have been taken, a- as in, as identified in the first, first paragraph. "Some requirements for reclamation of areas activated pursuant to an earth removal permit have existed since at least two thousand and two." I would think that we would lift our cease and desist order when it gets reclaimed. Or when there's a tran- uh, we have, I think, a transition plan, according to Chapter nineteen.
So what we'll do?
So this is, this is inappropriate for our Planning Board needs, I think.
Well, I think he substituted a, a little bit of poetic license here. What I'd like to do then is, is send him a note to delete the last part of the sentence after Pitchville Road, comma, because we never had in our motion, "Until a new or modified reclamation proposal." That should be, that should be amended.
That's not our terms.
That's correct. That should be amended under the cover of a new letter set up. And everything else is accurate, I think.
Yeah.
A letter to Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brandt, Mr. Brandt.
Oh, or to Larry.
Well, we're asking Larry to amend his letter.
Okay.
And to delete the words, "until a new or modified reclamation proposal," because he's saying that we voted to have that, and we did not vote for that. And we voted for the cease and desist operation for any operation of the gravel pit on Pitchville Road, because it does not conform to the Chapter nineteen gravel bylaw.
That's it.
And that's it.
And we're awaiting his attendance at a meeting for a transition plan, but that doesn't have to be in this memo.
Right, so that, the, uh.
I would strike everything after the word road.
We did not, we did not ask him to do that, and that is not part of the motion.
Right, it's not part of the motion, it's just, it shouldn't be there attributed to the Planning Board.
If he wants to issue a separate cease and desist order with those terms, that's his business.
No, he can't.
Well, or, I don't know.
No, he can't do that. He has to follow our request. And all we're doing is asking him to correct his letter and delete everything after the words, after the word road.
Ken, has this gone out to them yet?
I believe so.
Well, that's okay. Well, he, he can just amend it and send another one, that's all.
In the future, we ought to have, would this letter be subject to our approval?
No.
Should be reviewed.
Well, you know, it, it's that separation of power, basically, because we're asking him to do things and he, he took the liberty to put that in there, and it's just incorrect, but.
It's not.
He's already issued it, and, you know, it's, it's simply a matter of correcting it in another subsequent letter to Brown. That's, I think, the only remedy we can have.
Why do you think he put that in there?
I don't know.
Because he put it in his, his letter of?
Well, I don't think we're going to speculate on that right now. I think that's all we're going to do is, is, um, ask Larry to, to correct it with an amendment or an addendum to, to this letter. So that the vote and the motion that we made on the fourth is, uh, his letter to, is referencing our vote and it becomes consistent with actually what we actually said.
Can you follow that up this week then with him, make sure that it gets done?
Yeah, sure. Well, it's, it's important enough, absolutely, so.
And, in a separate, well, could you ask him for this addendum he's referencing? A copy of that addendum?
I can, why not? All right, folks.
Big serious meeting. Reminds me I'll shut mine off.
Usually quacks when it rings. It didn't even ring, it just barked. Don't figure. All right, moving on, so we're gonna. Got that?
Did I, um, what address are you sending that to?
Um, the dress that the assessors had was the ninety-nine South Bedford Street in Burlington. But we also copied Corwin and Corwin.
Perfect, thank you.
On, um, the letter too. They're both scent certified.
Well, that's a good catch.
Yeah, they're not our terms.
All right, so I want to go over your, your draft letter, Tom?
The gravel pit?
Gravel pit, gravel. This is going to be presented this coming Monday night?
Right, we, we went over it last time.
Well, give us a summary of it, then.
Well, basically, I, I've already given you a summary of it. Um, I wasn't really prepared for this, um.
Is this the one, Tom?
Yes.
Would you like?
Give a copy of it.
You're certainly welcome to this.
Oh, yeah, me, me, I have a pretty smart. I've given so many copies to so many people, I don't.
Well, let's, let's, let him figure it out, I made some notes on it from the meeting we had to select them. And I didn't know if these notes would revise it or just.
No, that's, um.
Is that the one?
Yes. Yeah, okay, I, I just use this for a minute.
Please, I, be careful of my notes, I'm not sure they're your words or I made some notes when I was over there.
Basically, I did a review of all the records in the town office and went through several different file cabinets and draws and there was, the records are a mess. Okay, so we, we've been working on those, trying to get those, we're gonna be working on those to get those, um, fixed, okay. Uh, based on the research, section five of the existent, six, of the existing operations, most of these gravel operations were supposed to come into the, the planning board with a plan. After the two thousand ten earth removal bylaw was moved to general bylaw, o- only two people came, so that was basically discussed. And then and it, as, as the, we're currently, there's no open permits. And based on going through G I S maps and going through with the assessors, we're gonna go through all these different pits and find out where they are, who owns them and try to get these people to, to conform. The objectives of the planning board, uh, to work on the following year, remove, fix all the earth removal files, recommend the select board that they put in place and plan that the, uh, to redo all the files in the planning board's office. Uh, the planning board's gonna develop a spreadsheet of all former earth removal operations. Will include a list of the assessors' pages and all the current information, current taxes. And the current, the planning board should conduct, uh, um, site visits to all the former, um, ground pit operations to find out where they are, where they are and try to get these people to come in and to conform to the new bylaw. That's the basically the gist of it.
And are you going to be updating it to include the cease and desist order?
No, that was just, this is the April fifteen annual report that we give to the select board.
Okay.
And it's just basically telling them where we are, what, and what our plans are for the next year, as required by chapter nineteen of the general bylaw. So it's just an overview, next year, hopefully, when we do this report, we'll be able to lay out specifically each, um, gravel pit, what's, what the condition of it is and what it's done. Now, what we've done since this was written, give that back to Tom, please. Since we, since this was written, we've started our inspections and we've inspected three pits, like I told you earlier. And, um, those three pits have, two of the three pits have had reports written. And, um, they've actually been submitted to the select board to review prior to their meeting, so we don't know what they're talking about, so. Hopefully, they have read them and we can go over them. If you wanna go over those, those letters or those, those, um, reports, we can do that if you want.
That would be on Fletcher and Lead the Way, correct?
No, Fletcher and, no, no, the two that I did was, uh, the Brown pit and, um, Cateysto.
Oh, those two, okay, fine. Okay.
I think we went over those at the last meeting. Did we not?
I remember the Cateysto because they were here.
Oh, here's the, that's my file, I have it, it was wrong, fallen place. I have the Cateysto file, we can talk about that, we actually gave them a copy of it, so.
Yeah.
We did go over that at the last.
Yeah, they were here, so we're, we're up to date on that.
The Brown pit one, I'm not sure if we did, but I can go over that if everyone wants to.
Might as well, go ahead.
Okay. As part of the Hubbardston Planning Board's annual review of all town earth removal operations, Pitcherville Sand and Gravel was invited to do a site inspection with the board. Pitcherville Sand and Gravel declined our invitation and through their attorney warned the planning board that if we went on the property, we would be trespassing. We did our inspection from the town pit. Officer Amana can confirm that we did not go on to the Pitcherville Sand and Gravel property. From the town permit, we're able to view about seventy-five percent of the property and were able to take some photos. Town records indicate that the earth removal operations have taken place since nineteen ninety-five or earlier. The latest permit was issued by, to Pitcherville Sand and Gravel, was dated October first nineteen ninety-eight and expired September first two thousand one. Chapter nineteen, section five of the general bylaw dated two thousand ten says, existing operations without permits, within thirty days of effective date of the bylaw, each existing operation without a permit shall meet with the planning board to discuss process of developing a transition plan to bring the site into compliance. There's no record of Pitcherville Sand and Gravel has conducted, uh, contacted the planning board or filed a plan. At a meeting with the planning board in January six, two thousand sixteen, Pitcherville Sand and Gravel said that there's no, been, been no earth removal operations at the site since two thousand four. In a letter from the Hubbardston Board of Selectmen dated, uh, five thirteen two thousand nine, Pitcherville Sand and Gravel, answering a request from a letter that the town, that the town returned the ten thousand eight hundred dollar deposit they gave to the town as a bond for the two thousand, I mean, for the nineteen ninety, ninety-eight earth removal permit. The select board select, uh, stated that they had no record of receiving a deposit and asked Pitcherville Sand and Gravel for proof of the deposit. The nineteen ninety-eight earth removal permit has a requirement of five thousand dollar bond, not a ten thousand eight hundred dollar bond. The letter also stated that, please forward any information on closing the site to the planning board who now handles earth removal operations for the town.
Who wrote that?
That was, uh, in a letter from the Board of Selectmen to Norman, to Pitcherville Sand and Gravel. So the Board of Selectmen on um, May, uh, May thirteenth two thousand nine, told Pitcherville Sand and Gravel, please forward any information on closing the site to the planning board, who now handles earth removal operations for the town. The planning board does not have any record of the owner contacting them, nor is there any evidence that Pitcherville Sand and Gravel gave the town a deposit. The intent of the site inspection was to see if Pitcherville Sand and Gravel had fulfilled the conditions of their October first nineteen ninety-eight permit and the two thousand ten earth removal bylaw. The following observations of the site that we're able to see from the, we were able to see from the top of the sand pile on the town Hubbardston property. And the playing, given, uh, and the plans, and the plans given to the select board by Pitcherville Sand and Gravel Fieldstones Land Consultant P L L C dated one twenty-nine sixteen. Note, all references to the pages below are from the nineteen ninety-eight earth removal permit signed by Pitcherville Sand and Gravel. So, one, on page two A, and again, this is going back to their original permit. All loom or other materials cannot be removed from the site without written approval from the select board. There isn't, uh, that's what it said on the, in, in their permit. I'm quoting that. There are no visible piles of loom because we were denied access to the property, we could not see any loom. We assume Pitcherville Sand and Gravel may be in violation of this earth removal permit. On page two, quote, no more than four acres may be stripped at any one time, end quote. There are provisions in the permit that, uh, that more than four, more than four acres can, no more than four acres can be worked at a time. We were denied access to the property and therefore, we have to assume, so those, assume those provisions were not put in place. Detached photo shows there is well over four acres of stripped land. We estimated ten, thirty acres of the land. Pitcherville Sand and Gravel may be in violation of this section of the earth removal bylaw, uh, permit. Three, page C, quotes, no excavation will take place within ten feet of any abutting property. A letter dated October twenty eighth two thousand four to the Board of Selectmen from Attorney Stanton, who was, who had, has been retained by the Marinelli family that abuts Pitcherville Sand and Gravel property, states that Pitcherville Sand and Gravel is in violation of the earth removal permit issued by the Board of Selectmen. In the, in that letter, Attorney Stanton refers to report dated ten thirteen two thousand four by Whitman and Bingham Engineering with reference to this, these violations. The slope of, quotes, the slope of the pits extended to within five feet of the property line. The opinion of Whitman and Bingham appears to be confirmed by the owner's own drawings provided to the Board of Selectmen of Pitcherville Sand and Gravel by Fieldstone Land Consultants. P L L C dated one twenty-nine sixteen. We have been ni- been denied access to the property, so we assume the most current drawings in the letter from Attor- Attorney Stanton are correct. Pitcherville Sand and Gravel is in violation of this section of the earth removal permit. Page four, section two D, quotes, all slopes shall, uh, be, uh, be graded to one and, uh, three and one and a final grading. As you can see from the photos, there are large areas that are not ver- near vertical. On Pitcherville Sand and Gravel's plan from Fieldstone Land Consultants dated one twenty-nine sixteen, it clearly shows near vertical slopes. In Attorney Stanton's letter, the engineer confirms the slopes are very steep. Based on this information, we have, we have concluded that the Pitcherville Sand and Gravel is in violation of the earth removal permit in chapter nineteen of the general bylaw. Pitcherville Sand and Gravel has, has left this site in extremely dangerous condition. Five, page three N, excavation, quotes, excavation, excavation will not be within four feet of seasonal high water table. We were denied access to the property, so we could not, not, this, so this could not be determined. Page six, uh, six, page three P, this condition requires that Pitcherville Sand and Gravel to reclaim the land after they've completed operation. It states the conditions for restoration. On the west side of the property there, we were able to see sections of, that had been graded to the correct slope and there appears to be, be plantings as per the, per the conditions. We were not given access to the property, so we could only estimate that about twenty percent of the pit was reclaimed. We could see large areas of the pit that have not been reclaimed. It does, however, confirm that Pitcherville Sand and Gravel was aware of their responsibility to reclaim the pit under the nineteen eighty-eight earth removal pit. Based on a visual inspection from the town property, Pitcherville Sand and Gravel is in violation of this section, uh, of, of this section of their, their earth removal permit. It appears to the planning board there is many violations of Pitcherville Sand and Gravel. We did reach out to Pitcherville Sand and Gravel to review the site and hope we could start a process to close out the pit as the planning board has done with five other gravel pit operators. And two, seven, two thousand eight, Larry Brandt, who was the enforcement officer for the town, sent Pitcherville Sand and Gravel a letter with a copy of new earth removal bylaw and application for reclamation. On review of the files in the building inspector's office, no application or any information was found. Pitcherville Sand and Gravel has been in violation of this contract for more than, to, with the town for, for twelve years. The new, new earth removal bylaw has pa- was passed in two thousand ten. As part of the Pitcherville, that Pitcherville Sand and Gravel was required to submit a plan to the planning board. Pitcherville Sand and Gravel has not done this. Pitcherville Sand and Gravel attended a planning board meeting on January sixth two thousand sixteen to discuss a potential infill project for the site. Pitcherville Grant, Pitcherville Sand and Gravel told the planning board that if they were not given approval for this new use, he would not reclaim the pit. At the planning board's meeting on May fourth two thousand sixteen, the planning board discussed Pitcherville Sand and Gravel's inspections and the need to bring Pitcherville Sand and Gravel into conformance with section nineteen and fulfill their obligation to the contract they signed with the town. As Pitcherville Sand and Gravel refused to meet with the planning board or allow us on the property for an inspection, the planning board was left with no a- alternative to place a cease and desist order on the property and register that with the Wisticon, uh, order at the Wisticon Registry of Deeds. The planning board has under, uh, has used this process in two other earth removal operations. Both of these companies have complied with the bylaw or have, are in the process of developing a plan. The plan forward is to have Pitcherville Sand and Gravel follow the planning board, uh, allow the planning board access to the property, have the town consulting engineer make a determination of the existing conditions, any existing violations entered into this agreement, to have any violations corrected. If we do not hear from Pitcherville Sand and Gravel before our next meeting, the planning board will discuss enforcement for general bylaw section nineteen thirteen penalties, criminal, criminal disposition.
So that's what you're gonna present Monday night?
Right.
Can I take a copy, Tom, please?
Uh, yeah, and, uh, just attach, just so you know, attached to all this, this plan is all the documentation, including chapter nineteen of bylaw, copies of the letters from the attorneys.
And the emails that you sent two days before the visit that you requested Mister Brown to attend, would that also be in the records? That should be in the records. The, the meeting date was set for what day? Wednesday the fourth?
No.
It was.
Tuesday the third.
Tuesday the.
Tuesday the third.
And when did you contact Mister Brown?
It was, I believe, Thursday, prior Thursday.
That's not.
But, uh.
That's not true, you, you, but you read in your report several times that we refused access, we stated we do not have the availability to be there on that date. We respectfully requested you do not go without us present.
No, wait, wait a minute, Rob, that, Tom, wait, Rob, we were, Vin was contacted, your, you didn't call, your, your office didn't call Vin? Nor did anyone call us. Your attorney called our attorney directly.
Correct.
And directed them not to let us, that is the only, that's the only.
That's not what's written in your report, sir. Your report states that we denied you access to our pit.
Well, when you have your attorney call our attorney and, and I speak well?
Yeah, of course, of course.
Your attorney called the town's attorney and asked them to tell the planning board they're not allowed to go on that property. That is denying access. Is that correct, is that, is that not correct?
That is not correct.
How is that not correct?
He said, do not go on the property without us present, you're not available, our attorneys are not available. You're forgetting that part and that's, that's, it's, I'm optimistic that you'll be objective here and you'll write reports for all gravel pits like this, 'cause it seems, it seems like you're choosing one in particular. And I think that's important to be noted.
Actually, I have written another gravel report.
What kind of gravel pits have you done, I'd like to hear these.
Well, you will if we, we get through them.
Okay, I'll wait.
Yeah. But to, to, but, Rob, I just wanna be clear with this, okay? You, you may have said that to your attorney, but the, what, 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 we got an email from attorney.
Attorney's emails.
It didn't say that without you being there.
I'd like you to read that into record, though.
Will you put it in the records, no problem.
It's only fair, there's people.
We will put it in the records, no problem.
It's only fair, you, you read a biased report.
Well, that's in your opinion, Rob, I mean, you can't tell me what I'm gonna put in my own report.
I, 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 all I can ask is for you objectivity. That's what we've been asking for from the beginning and I just think it's, it's, it's a non-objective. Here's my, my, my own, my only concern on this report is, it's just, it's, it's notable in the timing, I don't think anybody would question that. It's notable that you repeatedly said you were denied access, denied access, denied access, but you didn't, you failed to say that it was a, and, and I, I, as a homeowner, how would you feel if the building inspector said we and four other individuals are coming into your home to inspect your home on said amount of time and we will, we will make a determination on that? I don't think that homeowners and business owners and families would be welcoming of that.
Well, they wouldn't be, and we, and we respected, and we respected that.
Well, may I clarify, I think, let, let's, let's get this clear.
Yeah, please.
Because first and foremost, this was a scheduled site visit by the planning board. And the site visit by the planning board was scheduled within the, in fact.
Of course, the forty-eight hour notice.
Beyond the, the, the scheduled notice. And it would have been a meeting subject to that visit. We invited all the parties from the Brown.
Uh, via phone, is that what you did, via phone?
It went out, email and phone.
Email.
Did email to Mister Brown?
Yes.
Yes, and.
Do you have.
And I believe there was a response.
You say that email went on on Thursday prior to the visit?
Right, and if you had said, if you're, if you're, if Mister Brown had contacted the planning board and said, I can't make that day, I'd like to do it another day, okay?
I'd like you to read the attorney's email.
Can I, do you stop interrupting me? Stop interrupting me.
Yes, sir.
If you had said, if you or your attorney had said, we can't make that meeting, we'd like to do it another day, we would have rescheduled. And I think Vin said that he would reschedule anytime you wanted. But we got from your attorney, through the town attorney, okay, a do not go on that property. So we respected your. So we respected your, your thing, and in my report, and what I say in my report, a lot of the things in here, we could make a determination. I had to ex- say on each one of those items that I wrote, that we did, we were denied access, to explain that particular item that you, we thought you were in violation of, and on two of those violations, I said they may be on, they may be in violation, they may not be, but we were denied access. We asked you to go there, and you didn't offer another time, nor did you even request another time to do it. All, all you said was, through your attorney, "Do not go on the property," in which we respected that and we did not go on it. And we, uh, going forward, we are asking for your company to meet us down there with an engineer so we can do it. They're not, when, you're asking for, we were asking for a report in one specific time and date, and you people didn't wanna reschedule it, you didn't appeal, ask to reschedule it? You just said, "Do not go on our property." That's what you said.
Could I offer a suggestion?
All right, wait, wait a minute. Here we go. Sorry. Wait just a second, I have that email you're looking for, Rob.
It was an email train. Train.
Jan, can we respectfully request that all conversations, all correspondence go through the attorney rather than through Norman Brown? Is that something we can ask?
I don't have, I may have it in my phone, but I don't have.
Can you give me, uh?
All right.
This is, this is. Can we just bring it to the next meeting? We'll have all the emails, et cetera, et cetera.
We will be requesting, um, a freedom of information after request of all emails and all feeds and all offline conversations anyway in the future from this entire.
What do you mean by offline conversation?
What, what you refer to as conversations offline, email feeds, email trains that have been going on, that have been discussed here in open session. That will all come up, so feel free to just keep going, but I just want you to, I respectfully ask that everything go through the attorney.
That would be fine. We, and I believe we have CC'd Corwin and Corwin on every piece of information.
I don't have Corwin and Corwin's email address.
Okay.
But we have their.
But I have Norman's email.
First off, you were, you can't ask that. You don't represent the company legally, do you?
Hold on, just a minute, Tom. We're not, we're not going.
I mean.
We, we, it'd be fine.
You make what every question like. We will be happy to accommodate you, send information any way you'd like us to send it. That's not an issue at all. I unfortunately don't have that email from Attorney Doneski, but I had a long conversation with him about it, and that was Thursday afternoon, which was, uh, four days prior to the site visit, Skype site visit. And in that conversation, I agreed that we would not go on the property for Mr. Brown's, Norman the fourth's request, and I discussed with the, it's the Doneski that we would still review the property from town pit, and he agreed that would be fine. He also mentioned that it would probably be a good idea, should we have the meeting that was scheduled for March ninth, that the entire select board, town administrator himself, you folks and us, plan a site visit prior to that meeting. So that was the extent of that conversation. Other than that, I s- I have the email at home, but I don't have it with me.
It'll, it'll, that's fine.
The email for Corwin and Corwin?
No, that was an email from Attorney Doneski to me.
Attorney Doneski has Norman's attorney, Norman Brown's email if it must be.
Right, he received the email from Corwin and Corwin, and then sent it to me.
I'll get it.
Okay?
Thank you.
If you give it to me, Rob, then.
I promise. I appreciate it, thank you. And the only reason I requested is, and if you need it legally requested, we can do that too.
It, we have, no problem. So, anybody else have any other questions on Tom's report? Okay, thank you very much.
We did a, we did another inspection of, um, the town pit on Monday, it was Monday, with the town administrator and the town building, uh, ma- uh, D E P, D P W person. And, uh, we went over that site. It appears, according to the, uh, Tim, K, Cahill, A, Car, Cahill?
Tilhart.
Tilhart, Til- Tilhart. The, uh, town isn't operating the permit anymore for anything. They, they didn't wanna officially say that it was closed, um, because they, they have the potential of taking gravel or dirt or sand or something out of there until the, um, if they ever build a senior center in the town offices, new, uh, police station. And he uses it for dumping, um, tree roots and tree stumps and depositing, um, the sand that they collect off the sides of the roads. I haven't had a chance to do much research on it. It's a thirteen, it's a thirteen acre site. Information from that. It's a thirteen acre site, and, um, they're basically just a bunch of stumps, piles of stumps. Um, but the, the, the town pit is not, does not conform with chapter nineteen of the, uh, reclamation part of the general bylaw.
Do you have a lot number for the town pit?
Um. Yeah, if you, um.
Yeah, I don't know. There's a couple maps with lot numbers.
I can give it to you afterwards. It's, um, I don't.
What street is it on, Tom?
Pitcherville Road. Actually, I do have it right here.
Three forty-one, three hyphen forty-one?
It is, um.
Why do you?
That's okay, we'll, we'll get it.
Why do you need that?
Well, I got a map, and I'm trying to find out where the town pit is. I'm not a map, a plan.
Yeah, that's not gonna help you, though. The, the tax map numbers refer to the.
Well, these little three forty-ones, three forty.
Not sure that's where it is.
It appears to be. But it doesn't matter. Let's move on. We're taking up time we don't need to take back.
It's fifty-seven, lot, uh, map six fifty-seven.
Map six fifty-seven.
Okay, good.
Check the map, but it's the Pitcherville map, but it's lot fifty-seven, thirteen acres.
So I do have, thanks to Mr. Robinson, the, uh, the chain of emails, if you'd like me to read it to you.
It's all, I, I, it's, it's all gonna be taken care of outside this.
No, I'd like you to read them.
Or just date them.
Well, summarize them anyway. April twenty-ninth on Friday from Mr. Brown to myself, with the understanding the planning board has scheduled a site visit on May third, didn't understand what grounds it was being conducted for, and has told me that the pit was closed, and we do not have consent to a meeting on his property. And he's also informed town councilor to this fact.
What day was that?
That was, it was Friday the twenty-ninth. And then on Monday, May the second, I sent a note to Mr. Brown explaining that we would not go on his property, that we were still going to meet upon the town pit, and asking him if he would schedule a site visit prior to the May ninth meeting, and giving him the leeway to meet whenever he would like with us, uh, and explaining our purpose.
You, you missed an important, I, I feel an important paragraph at the very end. "We have informed town councilor to this fact. If you would like to discuss this any further, you should take it up between my attorney and town councilor." It wasn't, we are not available on May third and do not consent to a meeting on our property.
That's correct. So we didn't go on your property.
But we are not available on May third, but you want, and our, our, you, so then the follow-up paragraph was, "We do not consent to this." Take it up attorney to attorney, which is what we've requested, but you, no, I just try, I just try to be fair.
We don't have direct access to the attorney.
Furthermore, not only that we not have direct access, but we are not gonna schedule our scheduled planning board meetings.
Around us.
Well, if we can, that's fine, but that was a scheduled meeting. We're not gonna consult with everybody on the.
It was a scheduled meeting.
It was a posted meeting.
Correct, and we had that.
But I sat in this room and you set up a sp- site visit with a gentleman here regarding his pit, and you worked right with him, right with him, right sitting at the meeting, taking care of it. He was from, uh, Heaven's Way or whatever that place was, you just mentioned it, and you, you worked right there to set it up together.
And your point?
You didn't do that for us.
Bob?
We sent the notes out, and we, their response was to deny access to the pit.
I'll remind you, Rob, one day in a meeting, you sat right there, I think it was the March meeting, and I asked you, and I, pardon me?
I invited you to, to the.
I asked you, is it okay if we visit the pit, and you said, "Sure."
In March, before a lot of bad roads.
I know, Rob, I know, Rob, but you said it to me.
You worked very hard to put this report together, Mr. Brown. You should be very proud of your work. It's very intense, it's very specific. You did, however, state in, in many, in many ways that there, the records are, and I quote, "A mess." But yet no same, but yet you expect, uh, we send letters to the town, but we don't have letters back, so that means they didn't exist? But you, you have no records. There, when I asked that question a couple meetings ago, do you guys, you did, you don't get any of the reports that the, that the people did in, in coming out to our pits in the eighties and nineties and two thousands, and, and you, your answer was, "I don't know." Basically, and, 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 and so, records are a mess, but now.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
They might be disorganized, and we're going, we're going through, well, that's a word, but we're going through to straighten them up. And that's, that might be a six or eight month effort. That shouldn't, um, restrain us from physically visiting sites, and we've visited five now.
I, I, I agree, you're right. I just, if, if it was someone's home, I don't think you would be that same, have that same atmosphere.
I've had, I've had assessors walk up to a house that I own unannounced.
They do that all the time. I have, uh, two reports by Bruce Salik and Associates, one dated twenty-eighth of September ninety-eight, another dated seventh of July two thousand five, referenced Pitcherville Sand and Gravel removal permit that was sent to the select board.
On other pits, we have, uh.
We, we have information. Do we have complete information? That remains to be determined, but the information that we have, I believe, is what we're basing our reports on. And as I stated to Mr. Brown, the purpose of that site visit was simply to observe firsthand the condition of the pit in relation to the question of whether or not it has been closed. There was no other motivation for that. Anyways, let's move on. Anybody have other questions?
Nope.
Well, that's one report. I, on that same report, I offer for those who could not attend, I expected Mary Ann to be here, and, uh, Kendall, of course, did not, was not able to attend, and so these are some pictures that were taken from a vantage point that I believe is looking down the, the long alley.
South to north.
South to north. Most of them are, I, I basically didn't move my feet. I and tried to make a panorama. These photographs are offered as an addendum to Tom's written report.
I'll bring those to the Slack meeting.
Have you had a chance to review them and, and provided them to Tom?
Just saw them, no.
No, I've sent you all the reports and asked you to review them.
Did not.
Okay.
Did, don't recall, Sam. Sorry.
I sent them in three emails, because the files were so big. But, uh.
You didn't send them to me?
No. I sent them to Tom for his review, because he's the chairman.
Did.
And I sent you a note saying, "That's what I did. Expect them from Tom," or expect them from, uh, Vince.
Well, I must.
We'll get them, no problem.
Cause we're gonna present at the ne- that meeting the fi- uh, fields, is it, uh? The fields? You, you did inspection that day as well as the.
A fall line.
Fall line.
Yeah.
And Tom wrote a report on that?
Yes, I did. I have a fall line report. I, I shouldn't call it, well, I have a photo report. I can hand out a couple copies. I went to my buddy Staples and print them up. This pit is, I don't know, maybe ninety percent reclaimed, and, um, it's gated. We did not have a key to the gate, but the engineer in charge of this was Mr. Tom Christopher. And he was called prior to the visit, and he allowed us to enter and walk around as what we wanted to. And, uh, these were taken about five o'clock on a cloudy day, but you can still see that, uh, this is a, uh, for instance, bottom of the third page, you can see gentle slopes and nice green grass, and there's a lot of green in the photographs. If you look at the other photographs, there's a lot of brown. No pun intended.
I was gonna say.
I didn't mean it that way. Brown dirt, sand. And, uh, towards the end of the report, or about the third page into the end, you can see an area that has not been completely reclaimed, and I don't know, I don't know the history of this, so I'm just, I'm just being a staff photographer here, um, to understand the, the timeline and whatnot, would have to go to other documents.
We'll have to get these people in here to talk to us about the final completion.
Well, they, they were, they were in last year, and they requested an extension to permit to, to complete it. We granted that.
When's that permit expect, expires?
Uh, it expired, and we extended it, but, yeah.
Two thousand seventeen, it's good for two years.
Two years.
Okay, great, okay.
And that's, that's a very, uh, it's, it's a, uh, I think you did a good job. It's, it's vegetated, topsoiled and green, and, uh, he has a couple piles of, uh, topsoil there waiting to be removed. I think he's removing a little bit, uh, once in a while to other people who might need it. Uh, but basically, it's a nice green, gentle sloped, and, uh, of course, Kendall has always said, "These steep slopes are dangerous." Somebody's gonna go off them on an ATV or a, or a mountain bike or by foot. Uh, the, the soils are unstable, and, um, if I was Mr. Brown, I would probably deny us access too. It's not a safe site.
Do you think you have enough information to amend your report and include fall line as well?
What do you want me to, I wasn't gonna amend my pit, the Brown pit.
No, but your general report did.
Oh, the general report, yeah, I can amend that, yeah.
Okay. I should amend my earlier statement, because they were actually the third pit to have approval under the general bylaws. So there were three, Hackler, uh, the owners, the, the people that bought Marinelli's pit, and the fall line situation. I said two rows. All right, let's move on. Anything else we need to do on this? Report? I think you've done well on this, Tom.
Well, we'll see. Did you put the bottom line on, on all these pits?
Well, it's, it's a report. It's what it is. You know, it's the way it is.
It's a picture of time. It's a picture in time.
Well, well put. Okay, let's discuss Attorney Doneski's letter. This letter was dated March the eighteenth twenty sixteen, uh, written by Attorney David Doneski of Coltman and Page to, uh, Chairman of the Select Board, Dan Glant, and members of the Select Board, referencing the proposed importation and deposit of fill material at property of Pitcherville Sand and Gravel. We've all seen this. Everybody has a copy of that?
Mm-hmm. Can I make a copy, please?
Sure. Let me give you a copy of the one that I have marked up.
Can you have it, Kendall?
Anybody have a copy that's not marked up?
Yeah.
Yes, in fact.
I don't have a copy of it with me at all.
So.
So what do we need?
I have a copy that's not marked up, if you need it.
You have a copy of that, Rob, you want a copy of that?
Committed it to me.
What's Tom Brackles' card?
Thank you.
If you'd like a copy, you're welcome.
Yeah, sure.
Here's one for them, it's a clean copy. I have an extra.
Fix, okay.
Well, here it is. Add that fall line in there, right? On the, on that app, the the report, add the fall line.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, this was presented to the Board of Selectmen at the March eighteenth meeting. I was present, but not actively participating, Tom Robinson was the acting chairman. Um. It was a a pretty good discussion with the Board of Selectmen and the. Subject being the proposed importation and deposit of fill material at the property of Pitcherville Sand and Gravel. There are some comments that I have gleaned from that. And, um. What would you like to say first, Tom?
Well, we we had, uh, the the gentleman that wrote the letter, it's a four-page letter. We had him, uh, he was present at the Select Board meeting. And, um, he spoke to the Select Board, because the Select Board made the request of him. And so he was reporting to the Select Board. He entertained a couple of questions from the floor, but, um, this is a long letter and to to, um. Understand questions you might have about it, or clarifications you might want, or just, uh, how, what does it mean in some areas, uh? It's it's a very well-written letter, no, no criticism of it, but just when you have the author present, sometimes he can give you color behind a word. Or, uh, enhance it in some way. The original concept was to meet with him. At a meeting like this and go over this letter. And, uh, that was denied us.
That's correct, yeah.
So tonight, we can maybe convince each other what we think it says, but without him present, we're losing that, um. Confirmation or 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 some such thing as a, you know, a color and insight. Did I take your pen? I'm sorry.
Look just like yours.
And, um, so I just wanted to mention that that it would have been helpful if he was here. And we can read it, understand it, and do our best, but it's not the very best.
Thank you. You look like you wanna say something.
I think we requested this letter from the Select Board.
No.
No, I don't believe.
You have requested an opinion concerning the proposed importation and deposit of fill material property. And he's, he's writing this, dear members of the Select Board.
On March fifteenth, a motion was presented for for the planning board to add the Select Board to approve special, uh, where is it?
Does it matter to you, or?
I just wanted to know.
I, I think. Um, actually, I think Mr. Brown was somewhere behind this as well, I can't remember the exact evolution.
I don't believe the planning board had anything to do with the request, Tom.
Okay. Could be wrong.
I, I, um. Oftentimes I hear about a question that the an- the lawyer is supposed to be answering. For instance, I I heard that he was answering the question, is the pit closed, or some such thing. And we wait and wait. Um, in my February twenty fourth meeting notes. I say, Select Board promised a joint meeting upon receipt of the council's response regarding jurisdiction. So we knew about it on the twenty fourth, awaiting town council response re-jurisdiction. That's as far back as I know it.
So, under this. Or in this letter from Mr. Dineski, he he comments on the consent order. And establishes the regulations, the guidelines, or the that DEP establishes regulations, guidelines, standards, or procedures. For determining the suitability of soil used as fill material for the reclamation of quarry, sand pits and gravel pits. And the DEP approval for such a filling operation is to be given by means of an administrative consent order. Which is not to be issued until a project proponent demonstrates by documentation that the appropriate local officials. Are aware of the project and have been afforded the opportunity for meaningful input. Interim policy four. Such documentation may include a copy of any local permit or other approvals specific to the use of large volumes of fill material that may be required. Where local approvals are required, such as the approval of an up-to-date reclamation plan. And or a municipal permit under an earth filing, filling ordinance. And he goes on to say, accordingly, you have asked what local approvals may apply to the proposal in which town body has authority to grant such approval. The interim policy therefore falls under two categories. Oversight and enforcement of reclamation conditions included in the last earth removal permit. Renewal granted for the subject property and authorization for filling activity beyond the scope of those reclamation conditions. For enforcement of the reclamation conditions, it is my view that the planning board has permit granting authority under the current version of the earth removal bylaw. Is the town body having jurisdiction. Fulfilling activity beyond the scope of that reclamation, it is my opinion that the planning board, on application by or for the property owner. May treat all or a portion of that activity as reclamation pursuant to the earth removal bylaw, or may decline to do so. Which would then make the filling activity a land use, subject to evaluation under the zoning bylaw. Additionally, he discusses the zoning bylaw amendments and, in fact. We actually have no zoning bylaw amendments currently in our zoning bylaw, our earth filling. Regulations under our zoning bylaw. Uh, he went into a history of the regulatory history of the. The town with the select boards, uh, permitting and then the cha- transfer to the. Uh, chapter nineteen general bylaws and the planning board being an assigned role for the permit granting authority and enforcement. Uh, continues on. And, uh. Concludes that the town still has the right to enforce compliance with any reclamation conditions. In the same way that conditions of other land use permits would apply, despite failure of the permit holder to comply with those conditions. In this instance, though, the question is which body has enforcement authority? He refers back to section five of the current earth removal bylaw, which addresses this issue. Which provides, all earth removal operations in existence in Hubbardston on the effective date of this bylaw. Shall be subject to the requirements stated herein according to the following. A, existing operations with permits. All earth removal permits issued on either under the provisions of the Hubbardston general bylaws. Or zoning bylaws prior to the effective date of this bylaw shall remain in effect until their expiration date. Permit renewal for existing permits shall follow the procedures this bylaw and be subject to all terms and conditions contained herein. On the basis of this language, it is my opinion that the Pitcherville Sand and Gravel permit activities, including reclamation activities. Became subject to the jurisdiction of the planning board, when chapter nineteen was amended to make the planning board the permit granting authority for earth removal. We have offered the same review, the same view regarding another community's bylaw. Where, as here, the amended bylaw does not provide that earth removal permits issued by the previous permit granting authority. Will remain under the jurisdiction of that other body. Thus, it is my further opinion that the planning board has jurisdiction to consider a new or modified reclamation proposal. For the Pitcherville Sand and Gravel site under the provisions of the DEP interim policy. Reclamation of the subject gravel pit was required by the last renewal permit issued in two thousand and four and its associated addendum, excuse me. To the extent the currently proposed reclamation activities are within the physical scope. E.G. volume of fill material, final grades and slopes. It is my view that they may be authorized by the planning board as action required for compliance with the yet-to-be-satisfied conditions of the two thousand and four permit refu- renewal. Activities beyond that scope could also be authorized as work necessarily related. To completion of an earth removal project. This is because a town may regulate earth removal under either a zoning bylaw or a general bylaw. See Goodwin v. Selectmen of Harkington, three fifty-eight, Mass. one sixty-four, one seventy, nineteen seventy. Section twenty-one seventeen of General Law, Chapter forty expressly authorized the adoption of bylaws for earth removal. He concludes with the last paragraph of, for at least the period of nineteen eighty-nine to twenty-ten. Hubbardston regulated earth removal under both its general bylaws and zoning bylaws. Now it is specifically addressed in only the general bylaws, the earth removal bylaw. Accordingly, it is my opinion that regulation of reclamation of an area excavated by earth removal operations. Even though the reclamation is beyond the physical scope of the reclamation provided for in the applicable earth removal permit. Would be within the authority of the planning board to regulate earth removal under chapter nineteen of the general bylaws and the most recent permit. If the town does not choose to exercise earth removal bylaw jurisdiction to that extent. It is my view that the reclamation activity beyond that required and approved in the two thousand and four permit renewal. Is subject to the provisions of the zoning bylaw and a determined determination of allowed use. Any further questions, please contact me, yours very truly, David Dineski. Uh. Conclusions from this well-thought-out letter, in my opinion. Indicates that the planning board as the enforcement agent and the regulatory bo- board for the earth removal bylaw. Is, uh, well within its rights to request the information that we're requesting from Mr. Brown. And I believe we should. Also be the the authorized agency to. Consider the infill proposal that is.
Well, it's called a reclamation pro.
Pending. It's called a reclamation. So, anybody got any questions about anything, or wanna discuss anything else that we have on this?
I I think I answered my own question, I had a question, and I'll I'll state it and just say how I prompted it to be answered. Um, but one of the premises in the opening paragraph is that this work is going forward under DEP's interim policy. So he obviously answered that, um, it's my further opinion that the planning board has jurisdiction. Consider a new or modified reclamation proposal for the Pitcherville Sand and Gravel site under the provisions of the DEP interim policy. Does that make sense?
Right.
But then, I I was going to ask the question of, well, what if it isn't under that policy? And he answers that question where he says, under chapter nineteen, the planning board to regulate earth removal under chapter nineteen. So, I'm happy. I had that question and I, you know, reading it over again, I find the answer right in the letter, so.
Well, I do regret that we were unable to have Mr. Dineski with us this evening. Uh, it's unfortunate, would have, it would have helped the discussion, but I I don't know if it would have changed my conclusions. After reading Mr. Dineski's letter. Has anybody else got any ideas on that?
Um, if we're not allowed, we so, the Select Board said we can't go to our town attorney, right? We, they won't allow us there.
No, they did not say that.
No.
They said they would not, what did they say?
No, they, they. Let me, uh.
They said the meeting.
I I've not seen that email, so, um.
All right, well, I have, let me refine this.
Down here. Isn't that the one?
No, that's not the one I want, but that's the second one I want.
Well, they're all here. That's the trail.
Not, I'll use that in a second, but not.
Anyone that needs?
What's that?
You want Anita's letter?
Anita's letter, correct.
Wha- wha- what about the the email we got from the current town administrator?
We'll get to that one first, second.
Okay.
Wanna read it?
Okay, that, that would work, right?
Use of KMP Legal Services by Planning Board.
That's the one.
Last night, the planning board impressed.
Okay, so this. Email is from Anita Shypers to David Dineski, Joel Bard, and copied to the planning board. Joel and David, for your information. Dated March twenty-second, two thousand and sixty. Last night, the planning board requested permission from the Selectmen to obtain the legal services of an outside counsel. The Selectmen did not approve that request for seeking legal assistance from another firm, but did authorize use of the services of KMP as needed. As relates to review and consideration of the Brown project proposal. As is standard, the planning board will initiate their requests for legal services through the town administrator or interim town administrator. And will then likely be given the authorization to communicate directly with the assigned attorney. Moving forward with the town administrator being CC'd on all me emails and correspondence. Thank you, Anita Shypers. So that was the March twenty-first meeting that we appeared at. And as it says here, we were given permission to access town council on this issue.
Through the town administrator.
Through the town administrator, which we have always done.
Yeah.
Um, that. Was followed up. With another email that I received from. I'm sorry. I was copied on from interim town administrator, Ray Ann Siegel, to David Dineski. I know I have this, I'm sorry for the delay, but.
What's it say?
It just came in the other day saying that we. It just came in the other day saying that we would not be allowed to have Mr. Dineski with us at the meeting this evening. Uh, here we go. So this is dated Friday, May sixth, and it is from Rayanne Segal, interim town administrator, and it is to David Dineski, Vincent Ritchie, Dan Glant, Jeff Williams, Mike Stoudt, Pat Gerard, Planning Board, Building Inspector, Town Secretary. David, I have received feedback, David being David Dineski, I have received feedback from the Select Board in regards to the Planning Board, Board inviting you to attend a meeting next week to discuss the Brown Pit. Per the Board of Selectmen, this meeting with town council is not to take, is to not take place. In addition, going forward, the Board has directed me to inform you all that any and all communication with town council is to be through the town administrator's office only. If you have any questions regarding the Board's decision, please let me know. Thank you, Rayanne Segal. So that contradicts the Planning Board's decision of March twenty-second. So we were allowed to meet with attorney, then denied his access tonight.
And, and the process to request his presence at the meeting was through the town administrator?
Which is correct. This is always the way we've, we've done it. Okay.
I talked to the town administrator about this when we did the site visit to the, the, um, town pit, and she said that she would make sure that we have that meeting with Dineski after the town meeting.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't appear that she has the authority to say that because she has to go to the Selectmen apparently.
Well, I assumed that she was gonna talk to the Selectmen about it, but-
But she doesn't have the authority of her own.
No, I think she was trying to get us to, uh, trying to, uh, reassure us that they would meet with us, but, uh, obviously she hadn't discussed it with them.
Well, nevertheless, as I said earlier, it would've been helpful. So we were not denied initially, but that, excuse me, was revoked.
So the, the question is, is still out there, who has jurisdiction? Um, that, not, I, we, we feel that we, we have jurisdiction.
I don't think it's a question at all.
Okay. Who was saying that we don't have jurisdiction?
I don't know.
I don't know. The question was asked by the-
No one ever shows up with the plan.
The question was asked by the Board of Selectmen and answered by the town council, confirming what the earth removal, earth removal bylaw says, and I believe that pretty much seals the deal as far as I'm concerned with who has jurisdiction.
So there's no one challenging, no one, the Select Board's never contacted us and said we don't have jurisdiction?
Oh, correct.
We could ask them and say, "Do you agree with Copland and Page's letter that, that, I mean, they mentioned, they mentioned Planning Board like eight times in their four-page letter."
It's pretty important because we have this meeting coming up about this new-
We have a hearing.
Hearing, on yours.
Yeah, public hearings, two public hearings.
Which is one of the reasons we're, we're doing this exercise tonight because it's important to have this information in the public domain so that it can be discussed at the public hearing. It's, it's important to us and it's, um, it's good to have this information so that we can relate it to the folks who do come to the hearing. But we'll prepare for that next. Well, I guess that's the next item on the agenda, preparation for the public hearing, public meetings.
Smooth, smooth transition.
Looked it right in. So anyways, um-
Wait a minute, Tom, do you have any here?
Is it relevant? Is that the right word, relevant? Is it, it, does it matter if we talk about the last public hearing we had?
No, we're not gonna do that tonight.
All right.
No. That, the last-
We'll have to catch up with that some of the time.
Yeah. The last public hearings are, are in the books and they went fine. The, the next public hearings are gonna be on the subject that brings to question the importation of soils. And I just think we needed the discussion on your gravel pit report and on the Dineski letter to the Select Board so that we are prepared for these public hearings when the public con- has the right to comment on it. And again, that was another reason we would have liked to have Attorney Dineski with us this evening, to make sure we were asking the questions that we would've liked to ask, but be that as it may. For the record, I did send a letter to the Select Board today objecting to the fact that we were denied access to town council at this evening's meeting.
Was that from the Planning Board?
No, I said, I sent it.
You said from the person, yeah, okay.
All right. And in that letter, I mentioned to them that in the fifteen years I've been chairman of the Planning Board, I've never been denied access to legal counsel, nor have I ever sought legal counsel without going through the town administrator. So it's a, it's a puzzling decision, but that's the way it is. The public hearings, has anybody got any question on how we're gonna conduct the public hearings in, in prepa- preparation for them?
Which one are we gonna do first?
It's scheduled for the, the ban on the importation of soils first. Now, I don't know, other than the last hearings we had a couple of weeks ago, which really were not terribly exciting and didn't get a, a good airing, in my opinion, because nobody showed, um, other than the, the folks with the, the scene, the, uh, age, Council on Aging, which were, you know, very appropriate at the two and a half override discussion. But here's how we do this. The announcements get read, and we request that the proponent of whatever hearing is bef- or before us make a presentation. The conclusion of their presentation, which of course we didn't do for either one of the hearings last time, um- The clu- conclusion of-
You should explain that the proponent didn't show up.
Well, exactly.
I mean, it wasn't, that we didn't do it, the proponent didn't show up.
Correct. Without a proponent for the two and a half override petition, or the charter amendment, I should say, there was nobody there to present and therefore there was nobody there for us to question. So we would allow the presentation, the Planning Board then gets the first opportunity to question the proponent of the question, and at that point, we open it up to the general public for questions and comments. When the discussion is through, we close the hearing. We write a report to the Board of Selectmen based on the, the comments that we have heard at this, at the hearing, and that goes to the town meeting. Okay, so if you have any questions for either one of the proponents, and the same rules apply for both hearings, that's how we should do it. We'll have the, the first shot, the review of the, the, uh, of the proposal, and then we open it up to the general public.
So, do you know if they, uh, make, the person that put the article forward, can they amend their article on the floor of the town meeting?
I believe, uh, a, an amendment to the bylaws can be amended on the floor of town meeting, but I'm not sure if they can be amended if it's a ni- uh, citizens initiative petition, and both of these are, so I don't know that answer.
That was one of the questions we had for Dineski, for Attorney Dineski tonight.
There is a citizens guide to town meeting put out by the Secretary of State, and I suggest we all read it. This is my first town meeting where I am sitting in the chair as the person that was elected to something, and, uh, it's a pretty good little guide, it doesn't address that particular question, but it's put out by the Secretary of State, and, uh, I suggest you all get a copy. If you don't think you will, I'll email it to you. Now, my question is, do hearings follow the same general rule as town meetings as to who's in the audience? Do they have to be registered voters, or, I mean, residents of the town? Can somebody from Boston come to this hearing and participate? How, how does it work?
Uh, my understanding is that if, if they have an interest in the hearing, whether it be a landowner or resident, or an agent, they're welcome at the hearing.
Is it true that it's not the same way as at a plan, at a annual town meeting?
It's-
There's a little difference there?
Completely different. It, it is designed to accept public comment on the proposal. It's not designed to make an official determination on the proposal, which town meeting will.
Okay.
So we're not making a determination or anything, we're just taking comments and letting, basically like a referee have, ask some questions?
That's correct.
Moderator role?
And, and we report, uh, significant comments in our report to the Select Board in town meeting.
At the town meeting.
The report goes to, um, either at the town meeting or prior to the town meeting.
Okay.
Can it be televised?
I'm sorry?
Can it be televised?
The hearing?
Yeah.
It is.
I expect it will be.
They're, they've already said they're gonna do it.
I thought it was next door or at the-
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna, um, do it next door, but record it because-
So they can have a camera?
Yeah, they'll have a camera there and it'll just be shown delayed.
Thank you.
So how, how do the townsfolk get notified of the hearing?
It's published in the town, I mean, the City of Gardner News.
In the paper?
Yeah, Gardner News.
And it's on the, uh-
Website.
Website of the plan. You go to Meetings and click on it, and help comes out like a calendar, and go down and find it. And I believe a hearing requires two weeks' notice.
It is on the website.
They send out emails like they do before these meetings.
It's posted on the website, you can read the public hearing notice, um, both of them, the, are gonna be published in the Gardner News next week and the week after, and they're both on the website now if you wanted to read it.
And the meeting is-
What's gonna go on the-
Can we do an email blast?
Tuesday, the thirty-first, right?
Yes, May thirty-first on Tuesday.
Correct.
Can we do an email blast like they do with other meetings in the town?
We're not going to, we're, we're just posting it as we're required, Slade Building, Ch- the, the-
Library Building.
And, you know, we're not even required to put it online, but we are, but it's not, it's, it does not go out to specific about it, since these are general bylaws that affect the entire town.
Right.
That's the way we notify the entire town.
I was just thinking more the email.
Right.
That's usually how I get notified at meetings.
Well, a- as of now, we don't have that policy or the procedure in place, so we don't do that.
Janet, could you ask Joyce to put that on the Facebook page?
Facebook page, yeah, it could go there.
For notification?
For those who use Facebook.
Right. I'll contact the city council, Gardner City Council and Gardner Conservation Commission.
They get notified, they get, the municipality gets notified.
Okay.
All local, surrounding town, planning boards and-
I mailed those out already.
They all get notified.
Okay.
The surrounding towns, the, um, state and the MRPC.
Does the notification include the articles?
Not the articles.
Summation of the articles.
Just, yeah.
The, the entire package of information is available in the town clerk's office if you want to review either article.
Do we have, Janet, could you, could you send me a copy of, I have, um, the little one, the one-page article. I don't have the multiple-page article, or at least I don't think I do.
Which one are you?
That's Mary Ann's out.
The, the-
Oh.
Articles for this meeting, for the public hearing. There's two articles, one is a one-page, very simple paragraph, and then the other one is multiple pages, it goes on. I don't have the big one.
I don't have a copy of it yet. All I have is the citizen petition.
That's it.
Oh, is that's what you want?
Well, I don't want the page with the signatures on it.
No, that's all I have.
I want a page that, I want seven or eight pages that describes the article.
You want the whole article?
It hasn't come, it, they just approved it, I don't think it's come out yet, the full town warrant, the article.
But Mary Ann submitted it.
Oh, what she submitted?
Yes.
Yeah.
And when a citizen petition's submitted, they can't change it.
Could you be, cause I've never seen either one of them, so.
Yeah, why don't you send the whole board both the articles?
Well, you go to town clerk's office.
I can read it on the airplane.
Me too.
Guys know how to have a good time. And the reason we haven't seen it is because that was submitted to the Select Board.
Right.
So, um, it's available, we just haven't, it didn't come to us directly, it goes to the Select Board first. Anything else on the hearings?
Nope.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, any other items that anybody'd like to bring up, not on the agenda?
There's some correspondence.
Correspondence? Yeah, from the DCR and Advisory Ruling on the Watership Protection Regulations, Sixth West Comet Pond Access Road, um, it's a mess. And there's a, something being, a garage or barn being built greater than four hundred feet from the bank of Comet Pond, subject work is not within an area subject to a specific jurisdiction of the Watership Protection Regulations as described below. So that's-
A copy was sent to the Planning Board and a copy was sent to the Conservation-
And to the man?
From the MRPC, we have, uh, a note to friends and colleagues and stakeholders, the MRPC has been asked to pull together a team of professionals to gather, analyze, and report how on a significant amount of information related to the economic impact of devens. Contents of the report will include economic impact report narratives concerning housing, transportation, recreation, certain subtopics under government and committing and land use of devens in the surrounding twenty-two communities within the Montechuset region. So anybody like to be a stakeholder in those meetings, they're welcome to attend. And last but not least, we received another email today from the interim town administrator, and it says addressed to the Planning Board, but specifically to Janet. Please provide the following information. Number one, Planning Board minutes, Planning Board meeting minutes from January twenty-fourteen to the present. Two, any and all emails written by all Planning Board members and Planning Board office clerks since the beginning of email use, estimate two thousand and three. Number three, any and all letters written by all Planning Board members and Planning Board office clerks since nineteen ninety. Thank you, Rayanne Segal. I have not yet figured out what this means. I don't know why that request has come in. Janet, do you have any light that you can shed on it? Nothing. It's, uh, it came in at ten minutes before this afternoon.
Is this your foyer?
See that?
Is this your foyer?
That is not two thousand and what, nineteen something?
Yeah, from nineteen ninety to, in, uh, two thousand and three.
No, ours would go through the Attorney General.
Anyways, I'll speak with Rayanne about it, try to find the story behind the story.
So, okay, okay, what do we want, what do they want? Who are they asking it for?
This is it. Um, there's no reference to why or from, or why, or how.
They really don't have to.
Okay, well-
It's a very vague request and it's all encompassing and there's a lot of information that it's not a specific request.
Do they have to be specific?
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying it, it's vague.
So we'll work on it, figure it out, that's all.
I don't know, that is written, my Planning Board members are playing this.
I'd like to return to Larry's cease and desist memo. Just for one second. If we put a period after Pitcherville Road, we're leaving out what he says, and he says, "Until a new or modified reclamation proposal under the provisions of something, um, completed to the satisfaction of the Planning Board." So- So what he has done correctly is explain to the recipient of the letter what he has to do to get the cease and desist order to stop. And if we were lifted, whatever their word is, if we put a period after Pitcherville Road, we haven't done that. So I would like to add a planning board term, term and condition, rather than just have no terms and condition.
We we can't do that to that letter because what he is quoting is, I, if illegally held quorum with the Hubbard's Planning Board in May fourth. The unanimous vote was taken, had the building commission issue an immediate cease and desist order for any operation of the gravel pit on Pitcherville Road, comma. And then the conclusion is not, was not part of our motion.
That's correct.
So what we are saying is that all we want referenced is what we said.
But might. Well, I wish we had what we said in front of us.
Well, I have that.
You do?
I believe I do, I do.
If the person receiving this doesn't get the information. That's necessary so that he can work to have the cease and desist order lifted. He's just got a cease and desist order on it, and if I was receiving this, I would say, well, what do I have to do to get out of the box?
Well, the previous cease and desist orders directed the the person that received it to contact the planning board.
Well, can can we ask them to do something like that or?
Right? Yeah, absolutely.
Or or submit a uh reclamation transition plan per chapter nineteen, or chapter nineteen?
Well, that wasn't part of our motion.
That wasn't a part of our motion.
Okay, I I don't remember exactly what our motion was.
Our motion was not to do anything there until.
Alright, so we're gonna ask him to come in and.
We don't have that in the notes.
Can you read our motion? Please?
Yes, you can. Tom Bracko moved to have the building inspector put a cease and desist order on all activity or operations of Pitcherville Sand and Gravel. Prohibiting all activity or operations until the compliance of the permit in the chapter nineteen general bylaws are through the law.
Full stop.
Excuse me?
That's all, that's all.
That's all.
Yeah.
Right.
That's all.
Well, that doesn't say this, but it could.
It could, you know, so that's what he he, if he wants to conclude with the finish of our.
Our quorum and our motion.
Motion, fine, but those words are not part of our motion.
Did you provide him with a copy of our motion?
I put it, uh I stated it in the letter.
You sent you sent Larry a letter?
I sent Larry a letter based on the planning board.
Right, and that stated the motion, the motion.
Yep.
Well, then he's not following our motion.
No, I mean, he's just, it it's simply a matter of making a correction on the letter.
Going back to the the request from the town administrator about Janet's time, I mean Janet's uh the request for these records. My recollection of the records request, they have to provide the funding for Janet to do that. So if they want her to spend whatever many hours it would take, I don't think she has it, we have it in her budget to do that work. So they're gonna have to supply her some additional hours, money to do that. And well as they.
They're going back to two thousand and three.
I mean, you could, you're talking, you're talking a lot of time.
Nineteen ninety.
Yeah.
Right, I would imagine.
Yeah.
I've seen the condition of the records, so I mean.
Yeah.
So if they wanna do that, that's fine, I I don't have a problem, and as far as my own personal emails and stuff, I'll give them my rate. And my copying costs.
I don't see how they can possibly request your personal emails and the the.
Oh, they can, they can, they have absolutely every right.
The the way it says all emails.
Yeah.
From the planning board members.
Any and all emails written by planning board members and planning board office clerks since the beginning of email use in two thousand and three. It's a very, very broad request, so I'll work with Rhian and see if we can refine it, and if not, we'll comply, and somehow it'll get figured out. You'll have plenty of overtime.
Well, I mean, we don't have the fun, she doesn't have enough hours to to do, perform the tasks that she does now.
I realize that.
So I mean, if they want her to do that, then they need to provide the funding for it.
Correct.
I don't think that's an unreasonable uh request.
Maybe we ought to hire somebody else.
They might wanna have someone else go through records, that's entirely up to them.
This is boxes of information that I see.
Yeah.
Not only does it affect the planning board and Janet, it also affects Janet's time with the building inspector.
Right.
You'll never be able to do it with, considering the the amount of work the planning board has. You know, the amount of work the building inspector has, you're gonna be imposed upon, so.
And I have another job when I'm not there.
Yeah, this doesn't say Janet has to do it, and we may have to hire a temporary person from an office.
But they have to have the funding to do that.
Person, yeah, well, but.
Oh, they.
There is a recent, recent, some recent uh information about information requests put out by the secretary of state.
Oh.
Well, we'll have to look into it, like I said, so, we don't have any history behind the request, then we shall find out, I guess.
I just remember it being in the. Lucky for me, I haven't been here about a year or so.
Me too, I've only been here six months, it'll be easy.
Well, we have to go back and get many, many members who have previously been aboard, going back to nineteen ninety.
Does that go back to Lynn Rude too?
Oh, goes back way back, Lynn Rude and Paul Flag. Alright.
Wait, nineteen ninety, they had emails back then?
No.
No.
It says.
Letters.
When when was emailed?
Two thousand and three came the emails.
Two thousand and three. Two thousand and three.
This is letters. By board members, I didn't get on here till ninety-nine, so I'm going back even further myself, so nevertheless.
You need to also um, or I guess we all need to offer, offer, I I went to the uh select board the other day and I asked them, do they have a. Some kind of a town filing system that we could use as a template, and they said no. And uh Ja- Jeanette or.
Jeanette, yeah.
Jeanette uh mentioned that there is a um records retention document. What you're supposed to keep, what you can throw away, and uh so maybe we ought to look at that. That would be the basis of what we're supposed to have, and we might take this oppor- this thing as an opportunity to uh. Organize our files in the way we want them.
That's a good idea, maybe we can get them to, actually, that's an excellent.
They're gonna fund it and and uh, or they have to fund it by law, we can, rather than just take a box up and Xerox it, we ought to look through it, organize it. Xerox it in some fashion that puts us in a better shape than we are today.
Or we can take the seven file cabinets and the fourteen drawers.
A forklift truck.
And and just put it in a box and bring it over to them. That's what I would do, if they, that's that they want it.
Well, no, we.
Unless they wanna be a little bit more specific.
Yeah, they'll have to get more specific, but there is perhaps a a an opportunity in this.
That's a good idea.
Request to uh to help the town have better records.
Well, let's do it that way, well, like I said, I'll speak with Rhian tomorrow and see if we can.
Yeah.
Come to uh.
Because this is the town.
A better understanding.
This is the town, the town expense, we might as well make the best use of the money.
That's a good idea, that's a real good idea.
They haven't appropriated the funding yet.
Well, they'll have to.
Seems to be their problem.
Would that be an article before the?
I don't know.
Hey, they must have read my report, took it to heart.
What are we gonna do with this?
Well, this is the, another item that I have under the.
Okay.
Items that aren't on the agenda. Um uh with apologies to Tom Bracko, who I had spoken with about information available on the Brown proposal. I reviewed all my emails and letters and notes in reference to quote-unquote the Brown proposal. Uh or project, if you will, and I'd like to submit this evening a motion. I don't believe anybody here has heard me say this, but it it came, my idea for this motion came prior to this note from. The town administrator for the record that they would like, but I also think that we need to have more information. Because I am relying on Attorney Dineski's letter that we are responsible for this earth removal permit. And the uh the gravel bylaw. So I'd like to put it to a motion that we request from the board of selectmen, the following. Any and all correspondence, including but not limited to emails, notes, memos, phone conversations between the Hubbardston Board of Selectmen. The former Hubbardston Town Administrator, the present interim town administrator, town building inspector, and the boards of health. Conservation Committee with any of the following, Norman Brown the third, Norman Brown the fourth, any official of the companies listed in the first paragraph. And any of Mr. Brown's associates, in the first paragraph, I'm sorry, I overlooked that. Regarding the issue of the Pitcherville Sand and Gravel, AKA Hubbardston Reclamation LLC, quote, proposed project of Norman Brown the third. At the property located at Pitcherville Road in Hubbardston, Mass, parentheses, the project. So that's what I am referring to. Second, I'd like copies, notes, recordings of any proposal made by Mr. Brown or any of his associates or staff regarding. The Pitcherville Sand and Gravel pit or any other pit in the town of Hubbardston, including the pit owned by the town. Any and all correspondence between the town of Hubbardston and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Minutes of the select board meeting of October twenty eighth, twenty fifteen with Mr. Brown, the DEP, and town officials in the town office. And onsite at the Pitcherville Sand and Gravel pit, including the names of all present. Copy of the original agreement between Mr. Brown and the town, and that original agreement is in parentheses, between Mr. Brown and the town. As referenced at the select board's meeting of April twenty fifth, twenty sixteen by Mr. Brown's representative. Copies of all correspondence between county council and Norman Brown the fourth of Corwin and Corwin. Copies of all invoices from K and C- Copman and Page to the town in reference to the issue of Mr. Brown et al. And the Hubbardston Planning Board. Any and all copies of any financial component offered to the town by Mr. Brown or negotiated with Mr. Brown by the town related to this project. Any and all copies of any services, improvements offered or offered to or negotiated by the town with Mr. Brown related to this project. Copy of the official vote of the board of selectmen to deny the planning board access to town council. Any and all correspondence between the board of selectmen, town administrator, interim town administrator, building inspector, and town council regarding jurisdiction of Mr. Brown's. Proposed project and article nineteen of the Hubbardston general bylaws and the town of Hubbardston zoning bylaws.
Can I make, whoops, sorry, but.
Copies. Done yet? Copies of all correspondence between select board, town administrator, and town council regarding regarding Brown pit and project. And copies of all invoices from Copman and Page to the town and the select board related to the Brown pit and the project. I think we we need to have that information, I think that it's clear to me, we don't have as much as we should have. If some of those requests are not relevant, that's fine, but I think that it's as complete of a list as I could think of. As any way.
We we might put.
Just a moment, that 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 would be my motion.
Should I take a copy and give it to everybody?
Yep, before we make any discussion, we should get a second.
I second that.
Fine. Discussion?
Well, um we saw the the um, I'm not sure what the right word is, but going back to nineteen ninety. Going back to two thousand and three, um this request could have a town, could have a timeline put on it. So that we're not in the uh, what I'm gonna say absurd, you know, going back to nineteen ninety, uh we could put a timeline on this. That would be somewhere between September first perhaps, or October first, uh two thousand and fifteen. And that would constrain the effort. If we saw that in, for instance, September two fifteen, there's a whole uh bunch of activity, then we'd probably look back at August and July. But if we come into September and there's absolutely no activity, then we know that we've, in all likelihood, captured most of it. If that's your intention, if your uh intention is something different, for instance, to go back to two thousand and six where he had a permit and. Two thousand and four and whatnot and do some of the uh, find some of the stuff that Larry found when he did his history, then that's a different time. But we perhaps could make this a reasonable request because we have a shorter time span.
Well, it's not that I don't wanna make it a reasonable request, but we do have reference going back into the nineteen nineties. Where the select board had entertained an infill project by the Brown people for glacial till and virgin soil, if you recall that request. I'd like to have that part of the record as well, so I don't recall the specific dates, but I think going back as far as the original permit. It's not gonna be a lot of information in reference to this project, it it's not gonna include. Uh a mass of records, but it is gonna include what the previous board of selectmen determined, the permits he they gave and the addendums and information. Reference to the proposed glacial till filling, I'd like to have that as well, so I don't know what timeframe to put on it to begin with. But I'd like to go back as far as possible and to brings it up to the present.
Well, back as far as possible is a long ways back.
Well, it it would be, I guess, at the initial, I guess, at the initial. Application of the Brown permit, ninety-eight.
The grand opening or?
I I would believe that would be eighty-eight, well, maybe I have it here.
And you're right, there may be uh, there may be Copman and Page.
Actually, it's one to nineteen eighty-five.
Stuff related.
I have one in ninety-eight.
No, eighty-five.
Yeah, I thought there was one back in the eighties. And I know one of them referred to the filling of the permit with glacial till and virgin soil.
That's. That's in the file.
Yeah, that's the original, that's called the latest permit.
I ha- I actually. I actually have that.
Okay, so.
Well, it's in the file, it's in the, in the files over there.
But you don't necessarily, sometimes they have statements like, the lawyer was asked the question and we never hear the answer, you know? There are missing pieces to some of this old stuff.
Yeah, but it's official record of the minutes.
Alright.
It's in the minutes of the select board, I've seen those, in fact, I have them someplace.
Yeah, I I I understand what you're doing, I'm I'm trying to um, rather than be all expansive, I'm trying to be. I'm trying to put walls around this that we're not asking for the moon.
No, but but there are minutes that reflect that, and that, and they've already been copied and sent to us in fact, so, you know. We've got them someplace, I'm sure.
Alright, well, they they were, I saw them, they were Xeroxed, they were like in a book.
Sure.
Okay.
Anything else, anybody'd like to add? I mean, I, I'm trying to be as specific as I can, but I'm trying to be. I'm trying to capture the information I think we need to make any decision we may have to make.
About?
About the proposed project.
That hasn't been proposed yet.
No, it has been.
Well, it's been submitted for approval.
Oh, it has?
It was these drawings and the transmitted letter, right here.
Has it been approved, uh submitted?
There it is.
Says.
As well as the.
For approval and comment.
As well as the meetings that took place last October, and uh.
Is this the revised one?
No, it wouldn't, I mean.
It says for approval here, Rob.
Yeah, it's, but that, if you read it, it's, that's a um, I don't know what the word we use, but we weren't, we were putting it as a pre, you know, there's no clock on these, so it's not like it.
Yeah, but.
But it says. Get it any way you want, yeah.
It says, as a result, we are hereby making a formal submission for the above referenced project. You guys wrote this, I didn't, so. That's what it says, and we have enclosed copies of the engineers' draw- plans for your review. I, and we, our, and I, I'll read the whole thing, so.
And there was a letter from the lawyer.
This is our team, uh team of design professionals are currently working with DEP on a preliminary view of the soil management project. And we look forward to formally presenting the project and all, and and all the details at your next available meeting.
That's, that was the part I was alluding to.
Dated marks.
We look forward to.
Dated marks, dated marks, something.
Right, to the attorney and the.
But it, I mean, it does say you were making this as a formal submission, so.
Go with it.
Well, that's part of it, that's part of it.
That's why he's asking for it, that's why, um.
But included in my request are all the other informal discussions and emails and transmittals that we haven't seen. And, you know, unfortunately, I could not make that meeting in October, as I stated him when I was invited to go, so I, I don't know what that first proposal was all about. That's part of it, and should there have been any even, uh, other requests or offerings or negotiations, I'd like to know about it.
And you're saying you want that because Dinesky, Attorney Dinesky's letter says that we have all, we have, have.
Relying on the fact that we have jurisdiction under the Article nineteen of the gravel bylaws.
And this is a reclamation project, that's the title of it.
Not to mention the fact that we have a hearing coming up where we have two questions of importance that this background information would be very helpful.
Well, I, I was suggesting that there be a time constraint on it and you've explained that that's hard. So I'll drop my request.
I, I.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna get into tit for tat with the Select Board, that's.
Well, this was, this was an idea I had this morning and it wasn't anything related to the, the request that we received late this afternoon, and no one knew about this particular request until this evening. So unfortunately, I don't know what the rationale behind this general request is, but I, I can give you a rationale for what I have.
Right.
You know, and as I said, I, I don't mean to put you in a, in a situation after your conversation with Rayanne, but nevertheless, um, I initially agreed with you, but after reviewing all the documents and going back to everything that we have and we've listened to, and of course, you know, with my absence for two months, it, it did create a bit of a void for me. But I think this board needs and deserves the background that we, we have here.
And we want this be prior to our April thirtieth meeting, uh.
May thirty-first, it certainly would be helpful.
Well, we'll have to prioritize it. I don't think they'll get everything by May thirty-first.
Well, as much as we can. I mean, I don't think this is a, a dig deep effort because it's a, it's a prominent subject, it's.
Well, we also have to consider the fact that between receiving it and the meeting, we have to do some level of digestion of it.
So we could ask for it by the, uh, the thirtieth of May. I mean, you know, this is, this is information that's gonna be exposed, it's not information that we have to make decisions on. It's information that's gonna be exposed and it's gonna be made public and in the public domain. Um, what we decide on all of this stuff would then be relevant when and if we see the formal project proposal.
Are you making a public records request? Because they have ten days to get a public records request.
And that was what I'd been doing.
That's a, that's the official FOIA thing?
I believe so.
Freedom of Information Act. What's ten days from now? What's the date?
May twenty-first.
Again, I, you know, I really prefer discussion with the Select Board. I understand what you're saying.
Well, we've had discussions and we asked them questions and they say they don't know anything about the project. And it's hard to have a discussion with someone who takes that position.
And I'd like to have background information in order to discuss it, and this is what I feel we could get it from this. It doesn't say we're, we're gonna act on any of this stuff, it's gonna give us the information that you and I can look at and discuss with the Select Board should they wanna discuss it, and I have no problem with that.
And if, if we're going to ask them to fund the requests they make of us, are we prepared to fund the effort that we're asking of them?
If we must.
Well, I still think there has to be some way to prioritize this for the meeting of the thirtieth. Can we go down the list and make ones and twos?
What, what difference does it make, Tom? So it's a matter of disinformation, I don't think there's any priority to any of it, it's all very pertinent to whatever we're, we're looking for.
Is there any appetite to just not, just pursue, pursue this until after the town meeting?
I think we'd be defeating the purpose, I'd like to have this information for the, first of all, for the hearing and then for whatever relevance it has at the town meeting. It is definitely information that we don't have that we need.
Well. All the motions have been made in seconds, dude.
I'd like to get a drink of wine first. I'd like to say one more thing about it before we vote on it. Um, I, I don't wanna get into a tit for tat with the Select Board. And I don't think it's a good idea to do it for anyone. But being, that being said, the denial of us to have access to legal counsel and the ability of Mr. Brown to have unlimited access to the town council without going through the Selectmen or the town administrator, as Mr. Brown himself said he did, I, I would, I think I would have to support this now in the vote.
I'd like to say one thing before we vote on it also. I recall a meeting. I, I think, did you indeed get invited to it, the October twenty-eighth meeting and the?
I was invited, I was unable to attend, I actually told that to Anita. And I also told her in that notice that I sent her that the proposed allowed use was not allowed under our zoning bylaws. That it was a situation that was untenable then.
Um, the meeting of the twenty-eighth, um, you then, after it happened, uh, you wrote another note to them saying, um, I, somewhere around there, you said something to Dan Galant and Dan Galant responded, I think November third, with a letter that says, "Yes, we made a mistake. Sorry, we won't do this again, we'll keep you informed of, of the ongoing effort." I, I recall, it was just a little one paragraph memo, but I just remember seeing it. And, um, I have to say that, um, we haven't been included, uh, consistently in, in the ongoing discussions. Even simple things like sending us a carbon copy, they send it to Janet on Thursday and she doesn't come back to the office till Monday and then she sends it out to us. All this stuff just is always delayed, it's always, it's always kind of, uh, we're gonna have a meeting, oh, we're gonna cancel it. It goes on and on and on and I don't, reviewing this list, of course, it's really comprehensive. I don't think it's tit for tat, I think it's pertinent information. And it's, most of it's in the last six months, probably. So what I'm trying to say is, I don't think they've kept their promise. They didn't keep their promise that they won't let that happen again for a November third letter. They didn't keep their promise on the, when I went to them and asked them for access to select, uh, access to town council and, and, um, developed a policy with them, I agreed to it at the table. Uh, Anita published it, we've conformed with it and now it's denied, so. The first time it was denied, when we were in front of them, it was denied for cost reasons. And I can understand that, they didn't want us to go out and get another lawyer and bring them up to speed and they made those arguments and they were coherent arguments. This time, no reason is stated. It's not cost. This is a five hundred dollar meeting with the, with the lawyer. It's not, uh, we're not starting union negotiations or something that's gonna go on for six months. So I'm disappointed that, um, promises aren't kept. So I can support this request, I don't know how else we're gonna get the information unless we ask for it.
To the point that it might be tit for tat, I, I have no intention of having this as an adversarial situation, I hope it doesn't develop into that. I guess that would be how the Select Board perceives this. But this is, as Tom says, and as I said earlier, I think this is information that we deem, or I deem is critical in order to make intelligent decisions on this particular project.
Do you have in there the, any discussions about our, uh, with Larry Brandt about that cease and desist order?
Uh, no, we have the correspondence from Larry and it, this is going to the.
Between the Select Board and the town administrator and Larry Brandt.
That was what you mean? I believe I do.
That would be how he developed this letter?
Yes.
Yes, any and all correspondence included but not limited to, and I do have town building inspector.
I would add that in particular to that cease and desist.
I don't know how this, how this was, uh.
I don't know how it was developed.
It was developed consistent with his other work.
And there have been other requests that the Select Board had made of Larry, he's offered an opinion already about it, so. Anyways.
So do we wanna move the motion?
Move the motion, all in favor of the, and, and I will add that to the end of this, I have asked, added, "Please consider this request under the Freedom of Information Act." So we, we, we'll put that timeframe on it.
Does that do it?
I'll find out, I'll call the Attorney General's office.
I heard Rob earlier say, "Oh, our Freedom of Information Act goes to the Attorney General." I don't know what that's.
I'll call the Attorney General tomorrow, I'm gonna ask about all this stuff, honestly.
But we can CC the Attorney General with it, that's fine too.
In the past, I have to say, anytime I went to Anita and asked her for something, she gave it.
I don't anticipate any problem with this, this, this to me would just be.
I do.
Well, I would hate to think that, that it would be in the context of not providing it because there's something to hide. I, I don't expect that, but.
All right, I think we were up to a vote, we were real close.
All right.
Did we vote?
All in favor.
I, yes.
opposed, so vote.
Tom, your question to the, tomorrow, can you blast an email off when you have it?
To the.
If you don't, you know, if you don't, if you have the time.
They're hard to get a hold of, so.
Is there a request to us, a Freedom of Information Act request in this end date thing? I'm going on vacation for ten days, I'm not gonna bring my computer with me and print, print documents, so.
Just make sure you have your, your phone, your cell phone.
That's not, that's, what I, what I, what I know of it, that's, that's an inter-office request, it's not.
Yeah, as, as ours should perhaps be, I don't know if you have to put Freedom of Information Act request on there.
Well, it's Dan Allen voted.
All right, you're right. I can revisit it.
Where is that agenda?
What do you need?
I'm gonna fill the agenda.
Is this his original, okay? Regarding paperwork. I got home after the last meeting and found out that I had a copy of this letter. But I only had two pages. I had the first page and the third page because it was double-sided copy, we didn't copy the back. And so if anybody wants the third page, it's right here. Everybody's got it, remember, it's a three-page memo. I was reading it, it didn't make sense. Janet, you might love that, that's a three-page memo.
And you may have to do this as a personal, you may have to do this as a personal request.
Do what?
Do this. The Freedom of Information, I'm not sure a board can do it.
Oh, we'll find out.
Right. We'll call them.
Yeah, right.
If I get a hold of them.
Any other items, anybody like to bring up for discussion?
What fits have we hit? We've hit Cattisto, um, Brown, a little bit of the town.
Fletcher.
Uh, we didn't go to Fletcher.
We, no, but they're coming to us.
They came to us, but should we also go there?
Oh, let me get my.
And we went, um.
Fall line?
Well, I did, I have a lead the way, I gave you a lead the way. You're gonna have to find those reports that I gave you.
Okay.
Uh, I think there were three emails with one or two reports on each one because they're about five hundred KB, you know.
All right. Is that on the, the, what you're digging?
No, it's on emails.
Hubbardston Sand and Gravel, which was used to be Marinelli, right?
We have to do that.
Yeah, but that, we're just making a list.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where we should go, where we have left, which ones we haven't done. How's that, how's that spreadsheet?
Oh, Rieta, Rieta Ranch.
Rieta's a gravel, right?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, in the back. Big one.
Yeah.
It's almost, it's a big, big one. Hmm, Piet, I don't know anything about Piet.
Have you got a list then?
Yeah. August two thousand and one.
Oh boy, what can I do with it?
Um, the other one is, uh, it used to be a permit, I mean, I think we have to go through all the ones that were ever, basically ever permitted, just a kind of a drive-by, but the, uh.
And are there any that aren't permitted?
There's none that are permitted.
I mean, are there any that are?
Old ones.
Never permitted, is somebody digging in his backyard?
Well, I did find one on Google Earth, um, and I haven't had a chance to go by that. I don't wanna even say where it is or what it is until I have a little bit more.
All right, we'll go through the ones that have paperwork and then we'll try to find something that doesn't have paperwork.
Right, I'm gonna go up in an airplane too, if anyone wants to join me.
No thanks.
But anyways, uh.
One of these.
Piet.
Parasailers or something.
No.
I know nothing about Piet.
That's another one, Piet. Uh, I was in one, uh, what's the, uh, the, Ed Blanchard used to own it.
That's now Madison.
Madison Green, but if you go by there. Uh, Madison Green, they used to have a permit.
Yep.
That's one we just need to.
There, there was that abandoned pit that Boucher bought that he wanted to put the asphalt plant in.
Which one is that, that, could that be Piet?
I don't know, it's behind that small white house off of sixty-eight, almost opposite Madison.
Oh, that one there, yeah. I thought that was, uh, that was, um, I thought that was Marin, Marinelli.
No, it was bought by Boucher, remember when he wanted to do the asphalt plant in the Resona area?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here's my picture.
Do you have any lists of gravel pits, does Larry have any, Janet?
I got them. Janet and I will look at it.
Anything that I have.
There's a lift going back to, there's another one. Pittsville Sand and Gravel, Ed Blanchard, James Fletcher, Jeff Hackler, Cattisto, uh, Rieta Flea Market, that's where I found it, that's what I mean. Uh, Marinelli.
Right.
Piet. Fletcher, Ragged Hill Ape. Fletcher Ragged Hill Inc. Graves Concrete. Um, and then Martinelli. This one was done. Oh, wait a minute, Ragged Hill Inc. Gale Coal, that's Jeff Hacklick.
So, well, we're surrounded.
All them, and then.
Alright, well, we got that list, so. We got more.
There's more than that. There's a lot more than people realize.
How big does a piece of property have to be before they consider it?
There's two.
Yeah.
Category. But objective, right, Tom Robinson? But objective, one hundred forty percent is still gonna say objective, unbelievable, the actions are amazing here, unbelievable. What? You're in session, sir, you're in session, you have not called the meeting adjourned. And you're sidebar.
I was asking them.
You just sidebar and had a conversation about how against a proposal we are, that you can't. I'm sorry, in the amount of respect, his, his term was on a hundred and forty percent. He said the amount of dirt that they're planning on, and he said, you got, you don't have to convince me, I'm a hundred, that's not okay to do as a, you're an elected official, sir. I'm sorry, that.
Well, if I've made a mistake, I've made a mistake. He asked me. I'm looking for where the, where the.
Unbelievable.
Where the gravel pit was.
Unfair and unbelievable. Okay.
So you've got your list.
I know, I wanna, you know, some, you've been doing this more than me and I have to add my, kinda find my map. Of the town, there's all the lots. I'm looking for this lot here.
Where are we?
I don't know, oh, wait a minute.
Bay State Sand and Gravel.
Bay State.
Of course.
So, oh, here's the town pit right here.
Alright. What's the date on this? Alright, so, Bay State Sand and Gravel, Tom.
Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and one, that was the organization that bought the Marinelli pit. That subsequently went into foreclosure, and Marinelli has it back, so this is out of business here. But that was, they did apply, as I said to you earlier, they were one of the three people who had been permitted.
So this, this looks like the Browns permits. Pits.
Hmm, no, that'd be here.
Oh, okay, so this area is, they're saying, no, it couldn't be. So you're saying this is the town's pit and this is all Marinelli?
I believe so, at least that's what it says here, gravel removal permit.
On Pigeonville Road.
See, Marinelli, approved, DJ Palm. Thirty-two acres.
How does your, does the Brown, your pits, or your family, you know what I'm talking about? Do you abut the town property?
Uh, not, no. Ta- uh, Marinelli does. This is, this is us.
They have a twenty-two foot access.
This is the town pit, we're here.
So, town pit is right here.
No, whatever this is, is not us, that's not us, there's a roadway here, that's, that's, I don't know, I think that's, the town pit's down here.
Here's your map from the.
Yeah, that's probably another pit, I mean, it's probably another parcel of town.
I'd like to point out.
This is us, I'm pretty sure that's us.
I'd like to point out that your map shows this, this parcel included.
So if that's us, then yeah, then we do, but I, my understanding is that's us, that line there.
But the Brown is not yours, we're trying to.
No, that's Marinelli.
That's Marinelli.
Who's the green?
Marinelli as well, I believe.
Yeah, Marinelli. This is all Marinelli, now.
So those ponds were Marinelli, no?
No, that wasn't, where we were standing over here looking up here. We didn't see this.
Oh, okay, so we couldn't see.
So the road, road comes along here and we were there.
Okay, that makes sense, I think. Well, that was the one I couldn't figure out.
Alright.
That's good news.
So you got anything else?
I don't.
Alright, I'll hand a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Adjourned, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote. Thank you gentlemen, thank you ladies and gentlemen.
Can you unplug those speakers, please?
Unplug the speakers.